Okay, well, good evening. As you can see, obviously, Mayor De La Isla is not here tonight. She called this afternoon and she is sick, hopes to be here next week, and we hope for a speedy recovery. Also, received a call from Councilman Lesser, he's also sick, so a lot going around. So hereby, I call a meeting to order, and the first thing, I please give your attention to Councilmember Ortiz for the invocation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Let us pray.
Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come to you just thanking you, thanking you for another day, thanking you for another month, thanking you for another meeting. We are so grateful for all that you've done for our city moving forward, and we appreciate all that you're going to do. And last but not least, we appreciate the Chiefs finally making it to the final four after 50 years. We thank you for that. It doesn't matter if they're in Kansas City, Missouri, we're just grateful that they made it. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we now proceed to roll call, please.
Mayor De La Isla, Deputy Mayor Emerson.
Here.
Councilmembers Hillard.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Nager.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Lester.
All right, there are no proclamations or appointments this evening. We do have one presentation, so Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have Tim Laurent, Shawnee County Parks and Recreation Director, here to give a presentation. You know, we've had some discussion as we've looked at future improvements to various parks, and so I reached out to Mr. Laurent to come and give us a presentation so that we can begin, and I think this should be at least an annual, if not semi-annual, thing that we do in order for us to be able to continue to have the opportunity to see what's going on in our parks and our community centers and so forth within this city. The transition, they have been working on many things, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Laurent.
Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, I appreciate, my name is Tim Laurent, I am the Director of Shawnee County Parks and Recreation. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you today, and I appreciate City Manager Trout reaching out to me and setting this up, and I agree with him. I think that this should become an annual, if not a semi-annual event. I think, at least from my perspective, I'd like to be up here and let you guys know what's going on in these parks and seeing areas where we can work together in the future. So with that, I'll get us started. We have 100, you know, it's been a while since we've been up here, I think, before this board, so I thought a little refresher. We have 109 parks, we have 150 park properties, so we've got traffic circles and traffic triangles and traffic islands and all kinds of areas that aren't necessarily parks, but they're areas that we take care of. We have nine community centers. Two of those community centers, we lease out to the Boys and Girls Club. I just kind of wanted to throw that out because they're great partners, and we really appreciate what they do in this, in this community, so we're proud to partner with them. We have three aquatic centers and four smaller community pools, and we'll talk a little bit more about those as we move forward. I wanted to jump right in. I hope you've been seeing on social media and newspaper and other areas that we've done a lot of work in parks just in the very recent past here. We put new playground equipment in 11 parks. We've got 10 of those 11 done, playground equipment installed. We've still got work to do. Used Park is the only one, we haven't got the equipment in yet. We've got some drainage issues there that we're trying to get a handle on before we do those playgrounds. But this slide shows a community engagement that we did at Major Palm Park. We had a lot of kids there that day, and they had a good time looking through the options of what might be at Major Palm, and then you can see that we do have some playground equipment there. Community engagements are a big deal for us, and it's something that we're trying to do more of. I mean, I think in the past, maybe we've gone out and we might have the best idea, but if we jump out and do it without engaging the community and letting them know what we're doing, that tends to cause us some problems. So we actually have a community engagement going on right now at Clarion Woods about some work that's being done there. So that's something hopefully you'll see more from us in the future. This is Gwendolyn Brooks Park, right on Topeka Boulevard, another location that we've done playground equipment. I'm going to run through these and try to keep this somewhat brief, but Austin Park, new equipment. We also put a new basketball court in at Austin Park. Here's that list of the 11 parks that we put playground equipment in. We had about $250,000 to play with, and then one of our staff found a grant that matched that money. So we were able to do, our master plan calls for five to eight parks a year, we were able to do 11 last year, so we were really excited about that. But you can see the list there. East Borough Park, I brought, I got ahead of myself here, but East Borough Park is one of them that I put up there because I wanted to show this slide. This is a, this looks like a sidewalk. This is a hard-surface trail that connects East Borough Park to the Deer Creek Trail. So if you live in East Borough neighborhood, you can jump on this trail right here at East Borough Park. It's about a two-and-a-half mile bike ride until you reach the Shunga, and then you can ride that all the way across Topeka. So just, you know, our master plan that we did in 2014 is way before I got here, but one of the number, the actual number-one thing people called for in that master plan were trails and nature areas. And so anytime we can do things like this, I think this really helps us out, so. Willow Park, so a lot of improvements being done there, new walking path, new playground equipment. I hope you're seeing these park signs pop up all over town. We're putting them up, trying to replace old park signs. Parts of those are on back order, so we're anxiously awaiting to get, I think we have about 20 signs waiting to go in, so that should happen pretty soon. I moved on from Willow Park, but I do want to mention that at Willow Park, we're currently working with AARP of Kansas to do what is, it's called a fit lot. We were selected from all the communities across the state. This is outdoor fitness equipment, and AARP has been gracious enough to work with us on that. Last year, they worked with us, they gave us a grant for an expression swing at Ripley Park. So I've got a, I've got a slide here later that'll show you what an expression swing is, and, but they're great partners, so I wanted to mention them in my presentation. McKinley Park, I mean, this is an amazing example of what, this is a small neighborhood park that has been completely revitalized, and we didn't do it by ourselves. I mean, we did it with the Neighborhood Association, we did it with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This took a lot of people to get done, but if you haven't been to McKinley Park, what a transformation. It is a fabulous park, so I encourage you to go check it out. Hillcrest Community Park, so a lot of firsts here on this slide. This court that you're looking at is an outdoor footsall court. So footsall is basically soccer played on a hard surface. We play it in our community centers, use a slightly different ball, but this is an outdoor version. It's the only one in Topeka, it's the only one that I'm aware of in our region, so something that I think Topeka should be proud of. Again, I had nothing to do with this, but I'm going to take credit for it tonight. We have outdoor fitness equipment on this slide. You can see down here on the bottom right, that's a, some, a close example of what you're going to see at Willow Park if everything works out the way we hope it will. And then obviously, new playground equipment. But you know, we're not done at Hillcrest Park, so we are turning our attentions now to the community center. We have a plan to create a brand-new entrance, a more welcoming entrance, remodeling the lobby, remodeling the fitness room, the computer lab. I probably shouldn't bring this up because it is nowhere near finalized, we're in the very beginnings, but I'm working with Kansas State Athletics, and if you know, that's hard for me, but I'm working with those folks to do a project in our gym at Hillcrest. They want to come in and help revitalize a court in Topeka, and so the county commission has already given me a little extra funds to go along with that project. So by the time we're done, we're going to almost have that building completely remodeled and, and something that we're obviously really excited about, so. I don't want to drag this on too long, but I kind of want to read through this list a little bit because it's not just the 11 parks. Some of those are listed here, but we have new walking paths at Boswell Park. We've expanded the basketball court and the concrete paths and picnic pads and playground equipment at East Gate Park. New basketball court with solar lighting, picnic tables, benches, trashcans in Little Oakland. New basketball court, picnic tables, playground area in Betty Phillips. New walking path in Betty Dunn Park. Giles Park has new sidewalks, covered picnic areas and swings. As I mentioned, used court, we're getting new equipment there, but we also replaced all the picnic tables, replaced the drinking fountain, we're resurfacing the pickleball courts there. And then Cushionberry Park. I made a comment when I first got here that when I, when I live in Lawrence, I worked in Lawrence for many years, and when I would come over here for our state conference, the GPS would take me right by Cushionberry Park, and it was my whole impression of Topeka Parks and Recreation, and it wasn't that great. And we've got a national minority travel group coming in here in April. We have our state conference starting in a week. I didn't quite get it done, but we're revitalizing Cushionberry Park. New sidewalks, new basketball court, so new pieces of playground equipment. So these are all things that we're, you know, we're very excited about. Here's a great picture, we took this from our social media feed. That is an expression swing. It's not really being used the way it's supposed to be used. The kid, you know, the child, the small child sits in the small seat, and then the adult's supposed to sit on the other side so they can look at each other face-to-face as they use the swing. So people love them. It is, it is a great, a great amenity to add to parks. Obviously, these two kids are having a good time using it in a different way, but I won't read all these quotes, but I really do love this top one because this, this person's thanking us for some improvements we've done to Central Park, and they mentioned that they went to Central Park Grade School 66 years ago and how much they appreciate us maintaining Central Park. So those are great. We love getting that, that kind of positive feedback. Trails, I mentioned it before, that in our master plan, trails were the number-one want. That's what people want to see. This is the fitness trail loop at Gage Park, and this is a great example of what we can do when we work together. So the city completed two legs of this trail as part of some street projects that they were working on, and then we came in and did the rest. I think it's appropriate that this is in Gage Park because I also want to mention briefly the Gage Park master plan. We don't have one. We were close to having one. Again, this was a little bit before my time, but I really would like to see us revisit that, and I have had some conversations with the city manager, and I've had conversations with other members of this board, and I think that's a perfect place for us to get together and pool our efforts. Gage Park is a jewel for this community, and there's a lot of things there that need to be done, so hopefully we can get that done moving forward. Trails, here's our trail map. This is by far our most popular publication. It's a little bit hard to see on here, but these, the brown lines are hard-surface trails, and if you look over on the, on the far right, you see some, some red dashes. These dashes are where we're doing the Deer Creek Extension. So the Deer Creek, that'll be from 10th Street down to Dornwood Park, and then once we get that complete, which hopefully happens this year, then we really have less than a mile to complete Dornwood. We go through Dornwood Park, we start at Dornwood Park, we go through the Robinson Family Nature Area, and then we're right to 29th Street and the trails at Lake Shawnee. So, you know, in theory, you could, you could jump on the trail in West Lawrence at Wheatfield Village and drive, or ride your bike all, don't drive, don't drive on the trails, but ride your bike all the way over to Lake Shawnee, so that'll be amazing, and I think that's going to happen in the very near future, so. Let's shift gears a little bit here. Facilities and programs, I think I got a little problem with my slide, but that's okay because last year, this slide says we had 75,803 people participating in our programs. I'm going to apologize right now, that number was way off. We had 150,787. We only counted a portion when we got it on this slide, didn't notice it till later, so the good news is it's a much better number. But we're real proud of the things that we're doing, and I also wanted to point out the wreck-and-roll van in the back of this picture. I don't know if you've seen it out and about, but that's our chance to take our programs out to the people and where they're at. Out to the parks, out to special events. I know on National Trails Day, it was up at Skyline Park, so we've gotten some national recognition about that. It's up for a National Recreation Award right now. So moving forward, pools, we had, no, camps. We had over 2 million hours of Shawnee County Parks and Recreation camp hours this last summer. Areas, youth spent more than 2 million hours in our camps. We had over 67, or almost 7,000 kids enroll in our camps, and we, and they're spread out all over the community. So I want to point out here in this public setting that we don't turn kids away who can't afford to participate in our programs. So we have scholarships available, we have low, lower-cost alternatives, but when your kids want to participate in our programs and our camps, it's, it's our job to make sure that that happens, so. Aquatics, I apologize if I'm speaking fast. I had, I had a lot of slides, and I didn't want to keep you here all night, but we had over 100,000 visits to our aquatic facilities this past year. This is a photo of Midwest Health Aquatic Center. This is the bowtie wave pool, which, when it was constructed, was the only one of its kind in the, in the nation. So another thing that Topeka can be proud of. Gage Park Mini Train and the carousel, I mean, how many of us can remember the first time we ever rode in the Gage Park Mini Train? I grew up in Great Bend, Kansas. I remember coming to Topeka with my family to go to the zoo, and we had to ride that train, and we weren't leaving without riding that train, and I remember doing that with my kids, you know, when, when we would come over, and, and just the memories that we're creating, not just here, but at all of our facilities, all of our programs, that's, that's one of the reasons we do this. And it's not just here. These memories, as I mentioned, are being created all over the state and all over the region, so something to be proud of. We contract with an organization called Midwest Sports Productions to bring in baseball and softball tournaments. They do a fabulous job, and together with our folks from Visit Topeka, we estimate that we generate about $7 million worth of economic impact for Topeka annually through these tournaments. These are folks that stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurants, get gas. We think it's, not only are we able to provide, quite frankly, world-class facilities for the people that live here and participate in our leagues, but we're able to offer that or to create that economic boom for the, for the, for the county and for the city, so that goes, I'll talk more about that as we move forward. 230 adult and youth sport leagues. If you maybe even been involved in Parks and Recreation programming, I mean, that just blows the mind. I mean, that's all the organization that that takes, all the volunteer hours. We offer youth sports, soccer, flag football, T-ball, volleyball, basketball, we offer it all, and I think we do it extremely well. We were, we were given the Better Sports for Kids program, we were named a Better Sports for Kids Program Provider this past year by the National Association of Youth Sports. Adult sports, again, I won't really go through the numbers, but volleyball, slow pitch softball, basketball, baseball, soccer, football. I mean, obviously, we do this for the people that live here, but you know, the, in my mind, and I think in a lot of Parks and Recreation departments across the country, what we do and what we, our job is quality of place, you know, quality of life. And so by offering these programs, we, we're, we hope that we're doing our part to lure young families and young people to Topeka and keeping those people that are here, getting them to stay here. So not just through our programs, but through our parks, through everything that we do, that's in the back of our minds. So, you know, just the fact that we offer all these high-quality programs is a bonus. Talk a little bit about funding. Capital improvement funding is on here. The county rolled out a new CIP process at the end of last year. I can't really speak about what, what was done before. I know that there's been a lot of press about the money that Parks and Recreation received for the Family Park Project, the bond money. We're going to talk a little bit more about that, but I thought I'd just talk a little bit in general about just kind of where we are, kind of our, the health of the department, so to speak. So a few years ago, we did a study and found that we had about $12 to $14 million in deferred maintenance. In 2018, the commission was gracious enough to award us $3 million in excess reserve funds to spend on deferred maintenance, and I'm happy to report that we've spent all but about $80,000 of that $3 million on deferred maintenance, so, and the, and the rest is earmarked for projects that we just, that just aren't complete yet. So Jim Martin, who's a member of our advisory board, he's not with us here tonight, but, but Jim, he wrote a small report, I think it was 29 pages long, and if you know Jim Martin, that, you, you know what I'm, yeah, about our, our capital maintenance needs. And Jim estimated that we needed about $1.9 million yearly just to keep up with our current properties, so we have a, we have a $17 million budget essentially. We have $14 million in our general fund, that's a tax-supported budget. We have another $3 million in revolving funds that are revenue-producing funds, so that's for golf, that's for our camps, and that's for the Lake Shawnee campground. So all together, about $17 million. Our master plan called for us to divide Shawnee County into four quadrants. I don't know if anybody's ever been able to see this map, we show it quite a bit at commission meetings, but you can see on here, quadrants two and four are on the northwest and, or, sorry, northeast and southeast sides of Topeka, and that's about, if you, if you do the quick math here, that's about 67% of all of our facilities, all of our parks. They're on that side of town, and it sort of stands to reason. You know, Topeka grew from east to west, so we've got a lot of things on the east side. We probably need to play a little catch-up on the west side, but it's that balancing act of growing and then, and then trying to maintain what you have, and we could, we could spend hours talking about that tonight, but believe me, we do spend hours talking about it. Capital improvement funding, so I put a picture here of, of the, of the slide towers at Midwest Health Aquatic Center, and that was just to remind me to talk about Family Park. So there's been a lot of talk about Family Park. I want to give you an update on where we are. We're interviewing firms to work with us to create a master plan. That, I believe personally, is a much better place than where we were several months ago. I think we've slowed down and taken a little bit more measured approach about how we're approaching this. Once we have a firm selected, I can guarantee you one thing, the first thing that's going to happen is public engagement, not just with the folks that live in this area, but the folks all across Topeka. Again, I mentioned it earlier, that's so important, I believe personally, for our success, is to listen to what people want. What do they want in their neighborhoods? Now, I hope we can do that, and we can look at it globally, and, and again, it goes back to quality of place, quality of life. I want to do something at Family Park that we can all be proud of, and I also want to do as much good as I can everywhere else. So we'll just see how it all plays out, but I tell you, I feel very optimistic about it, and I'm excited about the project, and I hope that people can get behind that and feel the same way. Advisory Board, so when the consolidation happened, the merger back in 2012, an advisory board was formed, and their main goal, or their main role, was to help us navigate that transition. And at some point, they decided that they had, they'd achieved their goal, and so they basically hung it up. And, and out of that, we had a new advisory board was born, and that advisory board, in the bylaws, their, their main goal is to help us work through our master plan and help us keep on track to make sure we're doing what we say we were going to do. They do a lot more than that. They also look back on that contract, that, that merger contract, and make sure we're doing what we said we were going to do back then. They're great advocates for us, it's a great group of people, they, they work tirelessly on our behalf, and they provide a sounding board for us when we have issues that, it gives us a place, sort of a safe space to go and work some of these things out before we take them public. At least that's, you know, that's how I see it. I think it's a, again, it's a good group of people, and, and they provide us a lot of support, so. Just to let you know, there's 15 members. This council, they don't appoint, but they recommend nine of those 15. The county commission ultimately appoints them, and then the county commission has not, has six appointments of their own, so a total of 15. Last slide here is accreditation, so again, I can't, I'm going to take credit for it, but I had nothing to do with it. Actually, I was at conference, the national conference, when they got, when Shawnee County got their accreditation, and so I did have a few adult beverages with them to celebrate. But it is a big deal. Less than 2% of the agencies across the country are accredited, and the, and the reason, it's not easy. It's hard. There's 150 standards that you have to meet, and you have to maintain those moving forward to keep your accreditation. And so to me, the most important thing, and the message that I want to get across here tonight, is that this, in my mind, is, this shows how seriously we take this, and, and how, how much it means to us, how we understand that we're stewards of public dollars, public land, and so we want to make sure that we're doing things the right way, and accreditation helps make sure that we are. So with that, I know that was a long presentation. With that, I'm done, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Laurent. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. First, I think you all did a really good job.
Thank you very much.
I'm so impressed, especially with all the.
Mike's not on.
Especially with the flower beds and things of that nature. Shawnee Park is, or, yeah, Shawnee Lake is one of my favorite parks to go and walk the trails. So with that said, as I'm coming on board and focusing on what I believe is a real and vital need for revitalization of older neighborhoods, and we talk about quality of place and quality of life, you know, I just have like a couple of things I want to throw out there. Please don't get rid of our billiard pool. I mean, I'll help paint it if it needs a new, I'll find volunteers to help paint it. Please don't do that, because I'm 57, it's been around since I was a little kid. It's vital for, you know, the park and for the neighborhood, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Also, Santa Fe Park is utilized in so many different ways, and we, I saw a wonderful, at East Topeka Senior Center, I saw that they have a brand-new horseshoe pit. Wonderful. It, it's so impressive to look at that, and so I'm thinking, wow, wouldn't that be cool to have one of those? Because these guys in Santa Fe Park have been using really rough stuff for.
I've seen it.
Yeah, for a lot of years, and they're just very conscientious about maintaining what, what they can. And also, I just wanted to ask about McKinley Park. That is the one in North Topeka, correct?
Correct.
My understanding had been that, at least as of this last summer, that they were not able to get their restrooms, public restrooms, back in place there. They had been taken away and never put back. This improvements that have been made to McKinley Park, and I saw their brand-new sign and everything, are the restrooms back there for the public?
They are not. They are not, and it's important to, and obviously, those restrooms were removed, it's been quite some time ago. You know, I'm not necessarily in favor of removing things that are in parks unless there's an absolutely good reason, and I'm sure they had a good reason. However, we don't have public restrooms in every park. It would be almost impossible to do that, and, and so while I am in love with McKinley Park, and I think it's a great example of what we can do, I'm, I, I think we have to look at the usage and try to decide the best ways to spend those monies that I spoke of, and we do have, you know, porta-johns in a lot of parks. I wish we had, we could do better, but it is something that's been discussed at great length in our advisory board meetings, and so I don't have any plans right now to put them back, to be totally honest with you. I will speak to the pool roughly. I think we've heard pretty loud and clear that people want that pool. I think that, that, I have no problems with a pool. That pool has some, has some peculiarities to it that make it hard to do anything new, but we're, we're, this goes back to public engagement. We're not going to go do anything anywhere without meeting with the public and getting some feedback, and I've already heard that feedback, so I know, I don't have any plans to remove that pool.
Well, that's wonderful to hear, and honestly, you know, you need help painting. I'm sure we could get some volunteers. Thank you.
All right, everybody, you heard her.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to, I don't think I could go back to my Central Park NIA without sitting up here saying, me or Tony, but they were the first one to have the outdoor equipment, and that's, that's where they came from.
Oh, okay.
So that was a partnership with them, and they're very proud of it, and a few of their members have went on, but they worked long and hard on that.
One of the drawbacks of me not being here sometimes, I don't, I get these facts pretty close, but, yeah.
Well, and that, and that's okay. Well, and that's okay. Tony gets away with more than I do over there. So, I just want to make sure I shout that out. Maybe I'll get a bonus point there. We did have a master plan for Gage Park. I don't know what happened to it, but we did have one, and this council voted it down. I will look in my stuff to see if I can find it. But it was a pretty, pretty big plan that everybody kind of liked, but I don't think the monies were there.
Yeah, so you're talking just recently here, a few years ago?
I'd say probably twelve years.
Oh, okay.
Like ten to twelve years. But we do need to do something in Gage Park. You know, when it rains, it's terrible for the kids. When it, you know, when it's nice, it's awesome. But, you know, when it rains, it's terrible. You know, we've painted all that stuff, the boats and all that shoe, we've painted that a millions times. We need to do something that will benefit the kids, because everybody does. They come, they let their kids run there. We don't utilize it enough. But I will look for that plan and ask staff if they would look for it. But we did have a plan, and it got voted down.
Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tim, thank you for coming tonight. I just want to make a quick comment that, since I had been on the council, this is the first time I can remember, anyway, that we had somebody come and give a presentation and update us, because there were a lot of questions about whether or not the contract was being followed, things were getting done or not. And it almost seemed like you had to find out or investigate for yourself. And I don't think that's what a partnership should be. And so, I appreciate your openness and that your willingness to come even more often than maybe a year. Once a year, maybe come more often than that. So, I appreciate that. And just as a side note, I want to thank you. I don't know that everybody was probably privy to the fact that you have been coming to the meetings that have been organized by a group of South Topeka Boulevard businessmen to try and help improve the aesthetics along that boulevard that is the gateway to our city. You, along with Councilman Hernandez, what is it?
Emerson.
Emerson, Emerson.
No respect.
So, and you've been engaged in those conversations? And I think that is, the thing I heard more clearly than anything tonight, is public engagement, because I think that was a lot of the frustration that I had heard. So, I think the more we see you, and the more that we understand the role of the advisory board and whether or not they're having some impact on decisions that are being made, I think that's very encouraging. So, thank you for your work, Tim.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Laurent, you're doing a great job. Thank you very much for presenting for us today. I do have a question about what's going on in Gage Park with that body of water. What is the plan there? What is the purpose of it? And just, could you answer today for that?
Well, I honestly can't answer those questions. So, I, you know, that Gage Park, and I'm kind of learning all of this, too, as we go here, but Gage Park is sort of split right down the middle as far as ownership. Blaisdell Pool, everything on one side is the city, everything on the other side is the county. So, that is part of the zoo project, what's happening over there. I don't know if my predecessor had any engagement with that or did anything with that project. But I can say that since I've been here or been in this position, which was last July, I have not been involved in that project at all.
Is that something you plan to get involved in?
Well, I tell you what, I have members in my advisory council that are very involved in it. So, we're getting briefed about it at least monthly, actually, quite a bit more than that. I don't want to turn around, but, so, you know, it's there, you know? And what I would like to see moving forward is a way to beautify that area. I know that there were a lot of trees, I've heard this, anyway, a lot of trees that were removed to make room for that project. And I guess the biggest concern that I hear is that it's, how much water will it hold? Will it be just a sort of a swampy area with maybe some mosquito issues? Or will it be sort of a pond? And there's a big difference there. So, yeah, I mean, I'd like to be involved to the extent that I can. But, you know, it's there. I think we have to try to move forward and make the best of what our situation is.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I was going to say kudos to you for coming, but apparently, I'm prohibited from using that term on this side of the table. So, I'll just say thanks.
You guys don't say stuff like that.
Apparently not. I'm learning the rules. But thanks a lot. I appreciate the enthusiasm. And I guess my question is, you know, having seen this play out over a number of years, because the first vote to consolidate was 2005 or '06, and there failed, and then finally went forward in 2012. You saw, probably saw what was happening from afar, from Lawrence. Now, you've walked into this job. How successful has this consolidation been, in your mind?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm not going to, obviously, I wasn't here, but I heard a lot of horror stories about it, you know? And I think, and no disrespect to my predecessor at all, I think that with me, whether it was me or somebody else walking into this situation, I think one of the benefits is that I come from the outside, so to speak. So, I don't walk into our department and say, oh, that guy was with the city, and that guy was with the county. And that still goes on, you know? That still goes on. And we're one department. And all of my experience has been primarily with, I guess you'd call it urban, you know, recreation. I mean, I spent twenty, twenty-five years working in Lawrence for the Parks and Recreation Department. We didn't do anything in the county. We did everything in the city. So, I've had to learn more of the other side. I think it's successful right now. I feel great about the direction. I hope, just, you know, these slides don't really even show, don't really begin to show everything that's been accomplished. I get asked all the time, frankly, it's hard to go through, there's so much. I will tell you this, I'm a little bit off-topic, but I have great memories of Lawrence and the folks that work there, and they do an incredible job. That's a great department. I will tell you that we are, every bit is good. I want, if they're not listening, we're better. You know, we're accredited. The things that we have to offer, I think we take for granted here. You mentioned it earlier, Ted Insley Gardens and those sorts of things, the botanical gardens at Ward Mead. Unbelievable, you know? And I didn't really understand the scope of it until I got over here. So, to answer your question, I think that things are moving in the right direction. I feel, I don't think about consolidation when I go to work. I think about Shawnee County Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Doug, you have anything? Councilwoman Hill.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to say a couple of things. First, thank you for being here. I am so happy to have you here, and this is a great report.
Thank you.
People did a lot of worrying, and this is, it's nice to see it moving. Took a little time for that, too. I, too, agree with Deputy Mayor, or, and like whoever all said it, probably doesn't need to be more often than twice a year, but it's just really refreshing and great to have this exchange right here between our two governments. And so, I hope we can keep this up. Just in case people don't know, a couple of things that Tim did not mention, which have been really positive, in my view, is that Tim and usually at least one other lead staff are now regularly attending the riverfront meetings. And the river wasn't even on the county's radar when the planning started. And so, they're actively engaged, and that means looking at what's going to happen on the north side, what's going to happen on the river, and being part and party with us to look at what's going to happen on the south side. And I think it's really great. They also are now attending the Complete Streets Advisory Council meetings, where people are talking about transportation, including the trails, and our bike routes all over town. And that has been really fresh, to have them fully at the table. I would suggest, just on the side of that, that when we do our bike route maps, the trails are very prominent in that, because we saw it as a system together. And at least occasionally putting on yours, for instance, there's a leg on Twenty-Fifth Street, southeast Twenty-Fifth Street, that connects the Landen and the Shanga.
Yeah.
Which is a tremendous connector, and the county was part of getting that set up. But as we work together on these systems of getting people across town and also doing recreation, it's a great place to be. So, thanks again.
You're very welcome.
Councilman Dobler.
Just a quick question. So, you don't know anything about the big pond. It's not a new pool or anything. So, I guess, I'd ask city manager, do we know anything about it?
Of course. That project was a project that we did with the improvements that we were doing to the zoo. When we were looking at Kay's Garden and some of the other types of projects that we had planned for that area, there is no drainage system in Gage Park. Everything flowed through our zoo. And so, for us, a major type of rainfall activity would be detrimental to our zoo and the structure that we had. So, we made improvements both inside of the zoo and then also with the retention pond that we have there, in order to be able to control the water flow that we were experiencing through our zoo. That's in a very simplistic sense. We had to remove four trees, is what I'm told. And it was a major disruption for a period of time in the park, but in the long run, it was necessary in order to protect our asset.
So, that's a retention pond, as opposed to a detention pond?
Correct. And it holds it back for the period of time that we need and then flows through our zoo area.
Thanks.
There is a planting plan for that, though. Maybe could be shared.
Right. I think, the follow-on, I know we sprayed grass around that area in order to grow the grass. I don't know what is planned for the future. I'd have to ask folks that are more involved in the project going forward.
Brendan's making faces.
It's been planted. Doug informed me it's been planted.
Brendan Mayneau is making face moses back there.
Doug, go ahead.
Deputy Mayor and Councilman, the other thing I would say is that we, Brendan and myself, were fully engaged with Shawnee County staff during the entire process. So, we worked with them through trying to get into some initial stages of a Gage Park master plan, which we're going to contribute to. But unfortunately, the Kay's Garden project was ahead of that in terms of a timeframe. And as the city manager said, we needed to protect our asset from the water that was coming from the west side of the park. And this was the solution that we, classified as the west side. And this was the solution that everyone agreed would work best.
And so, this will be incorporated into any future master plan that could be put together?
While we're, I guess, while we're talking about master plan, is there a, is there a plan to get that rekindled? I believe at the time, I guess going back a little bit in history, a couple of years ago, that was killed, I think, at the Shawnee County Commission over cost concerns, which we all have to be cognizant of. But at the same time, I think between Gage Park and Lake Shawnee, those are our two biggest attractions here. So, I would be very much in favor of the city and the county partnering to get those done. Is there any discussions that way?
We've known, Tim and I have known, that that's something that we have to go back and revisit. I think we've each been working on our own individual projects that didn't refer to Gage. And discussions we had was, we're going to come back to this. We just, we're in the middle of other types of projects right now. It's not the priority, but eventually, we will come back to it. Because we were willing to participate in the doing of that. And so, it's been our intention all along to work with the county to be able to accomplish a master plan.
And if I could add on that, you know, District Four, my district, is, I guess, blessed that we have Lake Shawnee kind of in the, you know, basically in the middle of District Four. And I know there's also been discussion of a much, much less of a plan, but a plan for some of that area across some aquarium acres. And again, I would be, I guess, I would encourage the city maybe to participate if needed to get that, because that is, you know, everybody uses that, comes right from the city into that, across the street into that park. It's just, it's a gem of the whole city in Shawnee County. Any other questions for Mr. Laurent? All right, well, thank you so much. I appreciate the job you've done, and it's been a great year so far with you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Look forward to it, you and Mr. Looby, even. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Yes. So, with that, we come to the consent agenda, and if the city clerk will please read.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty-one, 2020, and there are no applications.
Okay. Hearing that, do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Ortiz, a second by Councilman Dobler. Any discussion? If not, please vote on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have eight yes.
All right. With that being passed, we now proceed to the action items. If the clerk will please read.
A is a resolution introduced by city manager Brent Trout, establishing the commencement date for terms of office for mayor and council members.
Thank you. This item changes the start date from the second Monday in January to the first Tuesday in January, when we go to swear in newly-elected council members and the mayor. Legal inserted language to address the issue related to the possibility of the New Year's holiday being the first Tuesday. And so, that's now addressed. So, I really believe that this is the best transition timeframe for our transition, so to speak, in power from outgoing members to incoming members by allowing the outgoing members to finish their term in December and the new ones to begin the new year in January. So, seek approval.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions? Motion approved by Councilwoman Ortiz, a second by Councilwoman Nager. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
We have eight yes. Motion passes.
Motion passes. If the city clerk will please.
B is an ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout concerning meetings and terms of commencement of the governing body, amending City of Topeka Code, Section 215-020, and creating new Section 215-120.
The ordinance change, this ordinance change will allow the city manager to be able to change the location of a city council meeting from the council chambers that we currently have in the ordinance. We will do this basically to facilitate discussion items, looking at making some changes in how we do our agendas to try and focus on action items, the first and third meetings, and focus on discussion meetings in the second meeting, and to get together in a conference room rather than here in the dais to be able to have those discussions. We will also be able to continue to televise those meetings if we have them in, you know, such as our LEC conference room or holiday. We also will have the ability, if we make a couple of purchases of equipment, to be able to take this on the road and be able to go to any location that we would like. So, if we had a particular item that was being discussed in a district, to be able to find a location and move to that district, we would need to make a couple of purchases. Like I said, we have money in the budget to make those kind of capital purchases out of our City Four budget. So, if approved, we would move forward in getting that done, in order to be able to take it on the road to any location that we would like. So, with that, I think this is just an opportunity for us to have some flexibility and to look at making some changes in how we do our business. Now, the one thing I will say, though, is there may be times, say, for example, an agenda, even though we say the first and third would be focused on action, there may be a reason to have a discussion item at that meeting. And the same would be true of the second meeting of the month. We may have an action item that needs to be addressed. And so, we wouldn't be exclusively one or the other. When you look at the numbers that Brenda put together from last year, I found it interesting in that we averaged four action items at each meeting and two discussion items at each meeting. So, if we take what we would normally have on our second meeting for action items and shift them to the first and third, and take the discussion items away, we still end up with roughly six items per meeting. So, we're really not changing likely the number of items that we'll be addressing in each given council meeting, just the type of meeting, type of agenda item that we would have.
Thank you, city manager. I think there might be some more questions. Then, Councilwoman Hill.
A question and a comment. Question is, what equipment? If I was on the staff, I would always tell you I needed some new equipment. But the staff takes portable equipment and does the county commission meetings, and we used to use portable equipment to do committee meetings. We still use portable in the ECR. So, what new would we need?
The information that I have is that it would take a Wi-Fi hotspot, along with a hotspot box, and then also to broadcast. And then also to broadcast, we'd need to make our SDI, HDMI, and cellular converters to be able to run our connection back through the network to broadcast on Channel Four. And so we'd be looking at a cost of between $2,000 and $2,500 for that equipment. And then whatever the monthly charge is for the wireless hotspot. So not a great expense at all.
Okay. And the comment would just be that, and I made it before, but I, I'm going to vote for it, but I'm concerned about confusing the public. I mean, when I've got people that want to come to a meeting or even getting pastors to come to do the invocation, I have to tell them how to find City Hall and where the council chambers are. And I know that we changed our rules not terribly long ago to allow people to certainly call in to sign up to speak up until five o'clock. We'd had that for a long time, but we added the ability to sign up when they got here because people who don't come very often didn't know that they needed to sign up in advance. And so for customer service, we may need to work harder on promoting those second Tuesday meetings so that it's fairly common knowledge where we are. It also occurred to me just today, when we were supposed to have an executive session this evening, and it's going to have to be postponed, but if we need to make sure that there's always, since we don't always know when executive sessions are coming up very far in advance, if we need to choose sites, always with in mind if we needed an executive session, how we would do that so we don't get ourselves caught. Just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to make a motion first to approve this for the sake of discussion.
Motion to approve, second. Second by Councilman Padilla.
And then, you know, Saturday, when we had our CIP meeting, I turned around and I looked at all the people behind us, and that was all staff behind us. And it was full. It was full. So one of the locations that we're talking about is the Holiday Building. And then I think the parking over there is crummy, but that's just my opinion. But it was full, so if we had staff and then you had other visitors, I don't know where we would seat anybody over there. And then my next question to the City Manager is, I know this council has worked very hard on security to make sure that everybody is safe. And the security that we had over there Saturday was not our officers. And if we had to move over there, we would need more than just that security. So what would that cost be? If we moved to the LEC, again, at budget time, there's a lot of people there, a lot of staff there. How much more room would we have to allow the outside people to come in? And again, what would that cost us? I know we have staff on duty as well as that, so I'm looking at that cost as well. And then last but not least, I've had a lot of people say, no, keep it in the chambers so we know where to go. I don't know if I can support this. I get what you're trying to do, I just don't know if we're there yet. And if we move to a different location, how safe are we there? Let's say we went to one of the high schools or something like that. And with some of the things that have happened on some of the councils, not here, but, you know, and I think it was Charleston, that they had people that got shot. And that's concerning to me. That's concerning to me because if we get some of these heated topics, that really draws people out. So that's very concerning to me. And, you know, sometimes people don't understand that we're just discussing it and we want feedback. They think that we're going to vote on it. So many times I get that, and they're heated. And so that's why I'm concerned about safety. So have we really thought about that? And how much will it cost? Have we thought about the cost of that?
I think from...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
As far as cost, I don't believe that we will have additional costs. I think the same personnel that we would have on duty related to our police department will still be the ones that we will require to have on duty for security at any location that we go to. That would be my intention. I don't see any reason that that would change or affect anything. The issues related to space, I think you're right in the sense that we would need to make sure that we're setting up the room over at Holiday in a little bit different configuration in order to ensure that we allow as much seating for the public as possible. The number of staff persons that were there at the budget workshop is considerably higher than we typically see at a council meeting because we had multiple layers down, all of our business managers were present, there were just a number of people that we wouldn't typically see at these meetings, the regular meetings, per se. So I'm not terribly concerned about those particular items. I don't think we'll see an increased cost. I really don't. Unless, unless we had a situation where there was, you know, a particular location might require, based on the number of entrances and exits, might require a few more personnel. But, excuse me.
And I know, you know, here, they put in the metal detector for that reason, so that everybody that goes through, and we don't, we don't have one at the Holiday Building.
Right.
We have one at LEC, but that's kind of used in a different way.
Correct. And it would require some different steps as far as to use a wand to do the search of individuals as they're entering the building. It might require a little longer time for people, all the people to get through that process. So there would be, there would be some issues. You'd have to search various bags versus being able to scan them. But I think the opportunity exists for us to have a benefit from this related to having the opportunity to have our meetings in a different format. You know, I think we need to try, is what I would like to see. And I think that trying this will tell us whether or not it's workable, whether it's benefiting us. And I really think that it's worth the effort to try and see if this is going to make a difference in how we handle our business and our accessibility to the public. And if it's not, then we'll be back here. And that's, that's an easy solution, but I think it's worth the effort to try.
Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I've had a couple of people mention that, I guess, just ask the question of why, why change all of this? Why go to all of the trouble to do it? I like the idea. Somebody mentioned when this, when the presentation was made about the Supreme Court going around the state, and it might be kind of cool. You know, going across the interstate or a few blocks to the north doesn't really change the location that much. I like the idea of a couple of times a year or something like that, maybe you have it in southwest Topeka, northeast Topeka, someplace just totally different if there's facilities I wonder if it's appropriate to refer this to a committee for a little bit more discussion before we jump right into it. Sometimes I, feels like we push things a little bit quickly, sometimes just a presentation and then a week or so later, we're voting on it. So if you were to accept a friendly amendment, I would move to refer this to, I don't know what the appropriate...
Policy and Finance Committee.
Fantastic.
There are two or three of us.
You'd accept that, and as a second, Mr. Padilla? Okay. So there's been a, now a motion, a substitute motion, to refer this to the Policy and Finance Committee for them to take a look at it. Yes, City Manager?
The City Attorney has mentioned that the particular ordinance that was under consideration in 4B has two parts to it. The first part is the changing of the date for the swearing in of newly elected officials, and then also has a portion of it that relates to the meeting. So if we refer, we won't set that up until, you know, that second part, the one that we approved in the initial resolution for in 4A, would also be put on hold, which, I mean, we don't have newly elected officials coming anytime soon.
For a year and a half.
But I just wanted to make sure you understood that it would defer final action on that part until we got through that process.
Okay, understood. Councilman, oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, what's next?
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I think that the committee format is good. I'm, I think there definitely needs to be more discussion. Personally, when I think about having something at LEC or the Holiday Building or whatever, that's like, yeah, kind of, you know, that doesn't really do anything. But when I start thinking about the possibilities of having it at community centers, you know, at really different locations, as long as it's not costing, you know, a lot of money, I think that is a possibility. I also have had a number of constituents say, why change it up? Why are you trying to confuse people? You know? So I think talking it out, seeing, you know, what more public input is on this. I think there's possibilities with the idea, but where it is right now, I just, yeah, I agree. We need to talk much more about it.
Councilman Duncan?
I mean, I'm generally in favor of this, although I guess if we send it to committee, I'm on that committee so I can do what I need to do to help shepherd it from there. I think what, the overall thing I guess I like to do is, it's not mandating anything in the sense that we have to do this or it has to. It at least gives us the flexibility as a body, the City Manager, to make an adjustment if we decide to do it. So I think that overriding piece is what I'm very supportive of. And then same to Councilwoman Hiller comment, notice will be important. I know it says in here, five days would obviously be, my suggestion would be, I'm imagining that determination would be made much sooner than that. So even if we don't have an agenda, obviously getting it out the day we know about it well in advance helps the cause. I did have a question, and I sort of know the answer to this. I'm assuming when we're not here on Tuesday, neither, the doors unlocked and there's no security down there on those evenings, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so my point would be, I'd like to come up with some very good signage that would all be applied to those doors that says, we are here tonight, go there, so people don't just show up here and wonder where the heck we are. But again, if this goes to committee, those are things we can work through and recommend through there, so.
Good point. Councilman Padilla?
Just quickly to follow up on Councilman Dobler's, I was one that mentioned about the Supreme Court. That came up during their blue ribbon discussions on how to vest, interact with the community as a, as a body. And they basically took the Supreme Court on the road. They carefully selected those locations that they were going to go to, made preparations with local law enforcement, and did everything that we've talked about that would need to be considered. And their feedback was generally, it's wonderful to be able to see firsthand something that we usually only get to see on TV and to interact with a body such as that. I started thinking about locations as well when this conversation started, and I thought, oh, places like T-Calc or East Topeka Learning Center, some of those kinds of places that are really set up for that. There would be minimal considerations to set up security, I would believe, because there are control access points. But it might give an opportunity for people who never would have come into a city council chambers because of its imposing appearance that it might make them more comfortable with their city government. I don't think that there is going to be that kind of confusion. This is a mobile community. Everybody gets their information through their cellphone or TV or, or, uh, social media. It's not hard to find out where we're going to be, and I think we can make every effort to do that. And to Councilman Duncan's report, uh, point, we're not mandating anything. We're not saying you will do this. We're just giving you that opportunity to consider it. And I'm sure that with that consideration, with your communication efforts with the council, letting us all know what you're contemplating would be helpful in making that final decision. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller, followed by Councilman Duncan?
Before it goes, so that I don't have to go to that meeting, what I'm, what I'm hearing is there really are two different thoughts. And so as the committee considers this, I think the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the City Manager's idea was to get the council and the staff kind of in a less formal setting, all around the same table to, to work together on issues. And so that might be one reason, you know, for a conversation. I think what I'm hearing from the council, which is an equally good reason, is to engage the public. And so it's a different setup to engage, to be set up like this, to have the public come talk versus a roundtable for staff. And so kind of thinking through all of those things, either Tuesday by Tuesday or whatever, is, is worth kind of chewing through a little bit before we go. Also, and those who are on the council before know, I am not worried about security. I think personally, we overdo it. I'm not as worried as others. And so I think we should feel like we could go anywhere and engage with our community, but just for what that's worth.
Councilman Duncan?
I guess a point of clarification. I know that's not part of the ordinance, but is this also the time we were talking about the agenda change, if you want to call it that? Suggested, I just want to, I have a question about that too, but I don't know if this is the right time to ask that.
Well, the agenda change is not something that's approved by the governing body.
Right. But I know it's part of this package and this discussion.
But it's part of the purpose, yes.
So I didn't want to jump before we're done with the other discussion.
Right. So yes, it's, it's part of the purpose.
Okay. So, okay, so here's my question. And I don't really have a major issue with it either, but we did this at one point, correct? There are some of you here who, we had a similar style or effort at some point before any of us got here. Not you weren't here, but I know there's some people here who were. I'm just curious why that changed away from that. I know we've had several City Managers since then, so that could, but I'm just, I'd like a little brief history lesson from anyone who was here at the time as to why we got away from that, did it and then got away from it.
To that, I refer to our historians on the council, either Ms. Ortiz or Ms. Hiller. Would either of you care to comment on that or have the first City Manager of the City of Topeka also on hand?
Exactly.
Any questions?
I guess I'm not understanding your question. You want to know why the agenda has changed?
Well, yeah, it's my understanding, when Councilman Dobler was the interim City Manager, that there was a, that we sort of went to what's being proposed now. It may have been slightly different, but sort of the same concept, do the two, have the one that's more discussion. Apparently, we did that for some period of time, and then we stopped. I'm, so I'm just curious, for those of you who are here, if we understand, and again, I know there's been staff changes, and so that may be part of it, but I'm just curious as to why we got away from that.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Well, I'm going to defer to Mr. Dobler.
Councilman Dobler?
Who set the agenda 2005.
That was a long time ago. I've slept since then. As I recall, you know, at that point in time, we had four meetings. Critical element then was they started at seven o'clock as opposed to six o'clock, so you were automatically...
We met every Tuesday, Neil.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. At seven. But sometimes we have five.
At seven, but we, yeah. And there used to be meetings before that that would run into the seven o'clock meeting. It was, it was a new council, it was a new form of government, and there was a lot of things that were tried and changed. And I think it, ultimately, things kind of stabilized over time, so the agenda stabilized. We went back to the, the four full action meetings every week, but then at some point it went to three meetings, which is great, and the time was moved back to six o'clock. So I, I think it was just too much change at that point in time.
No, that's helpful. I just always think it's good to ask, you know? Learn your history so you don't repeat the bad stuff and do the good stuff.
Exactly. I do know that, I do know that when I joined the council, some years before that, they'd started, the council meetings started at six, and we were still four meetings a month. But they were doing what they called work sessions. And so people were supposed to show up at 5:15. And with, with the idea of having these discussions in a little less formal, those were not televised, which really, as it turned out, as far as I know, wasn't a problem. But you just had a hard stop at 45 minutes. And sometimes those agendas had more than one thing on it, maybe two or three, that people were going to try and knock out. And that hard stop at six o'clock made it difficult. And so it was with that, correct me if you want, that the shift went to having the discussion when the last time we changed the agendas, to allow a formal designation of a discussion only time, to get the, get the action items out of the way so people could leave and then, and be able to have a discussion that didn't have a hard stop on it. So that's a little history on, on just the discussion part. And I, my sense has been that City Manager wanted to kind of pick up on that.
Thank you. I just think that helps, very helpful.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Lisa, this question's for you. Couldn't we take out the part and go ahead and approve? So it's, so we approve the two together? I just don't want to forget it when we get to that.
Councilmember Ortiz, you can certainly do that. Absolutely. Make a motion to approve, I guess, the revisions that, I think I'm on...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Revisions that are shown on lines 40 through 42, and then return... Revisions that are shown on lines 40 through 42, and then refer the other revisions that are reflected elsewhere to committee.
Okay. Would you accept a friendly, friendlier?
What motion are we going to?
I guess first of all, my question on that would be, didn't we already, since we considered that and voted on that, isn't that already done?
We haven't voted.
No, we did on the first one about taking, when we take office.
Deputy Mayor Emerson, you did. That was the resolution piece. And what we're doing with the TMC is just basically codifying what you did in the resolution, because the Senate bill only requires the resolution to be passed, doesn't require the codification of the code. But we wanted to do that just because that's the place everybody looks, instead of trying to find a resolution somewhere to see.
And my thinking as deputy mayor is, you know, we do things and then we think that, oh, yeah, we did that, and we forget. So I'd like to try to tie them both together, to go ahead and vote on it, so we know that we did it.
So you'd like to right now go ahead and consider the change?
And ask Kim for a friendlier than my friendlier motion to do that, so we can just tie it in and approve it.
Okay, so I guess would it be simple at this point just to withdraw the motions that have been made thus far, and then start fresh with your, is that correct, amendmentary?
Yep, that would be easier.
Okay.
Some of, the fresh amendment.
Okay. So we are kind of clearing the board here. We have no motion now on the floor, so Councilwoman Ortiz, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make the fresh amendment, or the fresh motion.
Thank you. That would be to codify the language in the TMC that we, sorry, please, if you have a good way to say it, Mrs. Robertson, please.
I would say, thank you, deputy mayor. I would say the motion would be to proceed with approving the language changes that are reflected in lines 40 to 42 with regard to the terms of office commencement date.
Okay.
And then to defer the other piece of it that's shown in lines 14 through 24, actually 26.
Just a clarification, it would be 39, lines 39 through 42, correct?
Yeah, mine, mine might be a different line format. Mine starts on 40, yep, but terms of office on mine starts at 38, and you can go through 42.
Yeah, so 38 to 42, you have terms of office.
You got it.
And that's just the, the language, you guys all have that handy, okay.
It's labeled terms of office, semi-coach commencement.
Yeah. Okay, so I have a motion to codify that language in agreement with the resolution that we passed. So I have a second on that.
And?
Second by Councilwoman Nager?
She had a second part in there too, also defer the other.
Do you want to make that as one though, or just, or is that two as motions?
We can do both. The, actually Brenda's got it entered into the system. Go ahead and read it.
I have a motion to approve the language on lines 38 through 42 and defer language on lines 14 through 26 to Policy and Finance.
14 through 26?
Through 29.
29.
There's a however in there.
Oh, yeah. Okay, does that get it right? Okay. So does everyone understand that? And you're still make the motion? And Councilwoman Nager, you still second that? Okay. Is there any question about what we're voting on? Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Robertson, would you like to explain, please, what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, deputy mayor, council members, if you go to the first page of the ordinance, it talks about section one, and it is basically an amendment to section 2.15020 of the Topeka Municipal Code. That provision, section one, will be deferred to a policy and finance committee meeting. And if you go to the next page, you'll see a section two that starts on line 36. It's basically creating a new section in the Topeka Municipal Code. It would be 2.15.120, and that basically codifies the resolution that you just passed, which is a change in the start date from the first, or the second Monday in January to the first Tuesday in January, first commencement.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Okay, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
All right. The motion is approved, and we now proceed to item action 4C. If the clerk could please read.
C is amending governing body rule 3.1 concerning regular governing body meetings.
With the decision to defer to committee, this item would also be deferred because this addresses the location of meetings, so this would be taken up at a timeframe once the decisions were made related to where meetings would be conducted.
All right, so I think a motion to defer to policy and finance would be in order. If someone would like to make that? Motion made by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Dobbler. Any discussion? All right, seeing none? I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'd be the Alcala.
Okay, so right now, we're going to vote on this.
Just to also send this to the policy and finance as well.
To defer. So a yes is to defer.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
Well, there's plenty of water.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
The motion is to remand it to policy and finance, not to defer. When we defer it, we're going to stop it and set it another date.
That is, I believe that is.
Refer.
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 Refer, yes.
Refer.
He referred to the policy and finance committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, yeah, no questions, no further discussion, let's vote.
Okay, we have eight yes. The motion carries.
All right, motion carries eight to nothing. We now proceed to action item 4D. If the clerk would please read.
D is charter ordinance introduced by city manager, amending the city of Topeka Code Charter Ordinance Number 117, Section 6, as codified at Section A229 of the Topeka Municipal Code.
We need to also move forward with amending the charter ordinance. This is an amendment as it relates to the term of office that we have changed by changing the swearing-in date. We now need to amend the charter ordinance related to what the term is.
Okay, so I have a motion of approval for Councilmember Ortiz. Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Padilla? Any discussion? Councilman Duncan, please.
I know the answer to this, and I hope I was right, because I told a constituent this. This, this portion just does, codifies what we've done. It doesn't change anything else in our policy of how we fill vacancies and all that stuff. Okay. That's what I thought, and I'm glad I thought anyway.
Correct. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, please vote.
Okay, we have eight yes. Motion carries.
Just as a note, this, this one required seven votes since the change of charter ordinance, but having eight, the motion passes. Okay, that's the end of our action items, so if the clerk could please read our first non-action item.
A is an update on staff action regarding the governing body goals and priorities.
Mr. City Man.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Tonight is the, basically the fourth quarter or end of the 2019 period of time regarding our governing bodies and goals and priorities from the previous year. There is a lot there, and I'm, what I did was when I finished this one, I left things that had been accomplished throughout the year along the way into the report, but then, as you saw in the purple writing, were the new items that we added to the report. Saw a lot of good progress in a number of different areas. I won't read them all, but I'll highlight a few. Our division of community engagement formed a partnership with the Topeka Youth Commission towards the end of 19. That was basically for the purpose of trying to engage youth leadership in our community and get them to the table when decision-making discussions are being made. There are a number of partnerships that will be occurring in 2020 that relate to this, a few that occurred in 2019. But it's exciting to get the youth involved with the activities, and good to see them making a partnership there. Along, another item related to the youth is that Topeka Fire Department, in partnership with the Jayhawk Area Council, the Boy Scouts of America, has reestablished with the fire department our explorer program for firefighters. It has been something that has not been around since 2007. We've had a strong police explorer unit, but now we're re-engaging with relation to the firefighters. As mentioned, there are a number of capital improvement projects that wrapped up in the fourth quarter. A few of those are mentioned in this report. Exciting to see that happening. There's a lot, if you look in the development of equity each council district and opportunities identified in developing a strategy to help develop our neighborhoods, a lot of comments towards the end of page six related to activities that we're seeing with our SORT program. We saw Tennessee Town completed in the fourth quarter. The Quentin Heights Steel Neighborhood SORT Program projects have been wintered, but we made some good progress before we had to do that. They'll commence back up as soon as the weather changes in the first quarter or early second quarter, and so look forward to seeing those projects done. Along the way, we're moving forward with what comes for the future related to SORT. The Central Park Neighborhood Plan was adopted in October, and you see some of those types of projects being looked at in our capital improvement plan for the coming year. Planning has also begun work on our next neighborhood SORT, which is East Topeka North, and they actually have their kickoff meeting February 6th later this week. And so they'll be developing their plan and things that they want to attack in that I guess we have in regards to one of the items that the governing body approved, which was the moving forward with the vacant and foreclosed property registration process. The RFP was sent out, and we did finalize our selection, finalizing contract with Prochamps, which was actually the company that made a presentation when we introduced this. They were the winning bidder for that, and so we're now in the process of formulating the plans and specs related to the implementation of that. So that'll be forthcoming here in the near future. I guess one thing I want to highlight that did occur in the Department of Neighborhood Relations was our Impact Avenues program this year really did begin to help a number of children and families. They, to date, have provided intensive management to 62 families, which is supporting 129 children in our 501 school district to help them with issues, to help so that they don't end up homeless, or if they are, give them the resources they need. There was a wonderful grant program that was provided, some funding from Advisors Excel in order to make that happen. And then we've got contracts with a number of service agencies in our community that are being involved with this to make sure that people receive the support they need in order to handle the homelessness. Something we'll see probably more often as we go through the coming year is that we, you know, the council approved a new sign code, and so there'll be implementation of the new standards that relate to that, and so that'll be something that will hopefully start approving some of the aesthetics within our neighborhood as we deal with signs. And for the first time ever, the city adopted commercial building design guidelines to improve this aesthetic appearance of our future construction projects. So it's a lot there. As a side note, as we go forward into 2020, we're still waiting to receive back the final report from our consultant related to our last goal-setting session in January. Once we have that information, then staff will, we will bring that eventually to the governing body for final approval of those, giving you the last look at how it was pulled together. And then, once you've approved those, then staff will begin to look at an action plan to address the issues that were identified and the objectives that were identified. And so then you'll see an action plan, and then I'll begin to make reports to you how we're coming along and accomplishing that action plan to address the goals and objectives that you created this year, so. All I have. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilwoman Nager?
When do you think that will all be kind of processed and ready for us to look at?
Well, I think that we're expecting sometime probably next week or so to receive the report. We expect that to be relatively soon. I think within the next week or so, we'll see that report coming from them. As soon as we get it, we'll make sure, based on what we remember, that it looks like what you talked about, and then we'll get it on the agenda for you guys to do a final review and approval, and I think that's critical. You know, just because we came away with understanding what we were going to do, I want to make sure that what we present as a published goals and objectives is what you talked about. Don't want to see it changed or modified in any way that isn't what you support, and I think that's why it's critical. The other thing is, is by approving that, it broadcasts it to the community as far as what our goals and objectives are for this year, and anyone that maybe would want to comment on the goals and objectives you created would be able to come to a meeting and do so.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, deputy mayor. I, if I could make a request, that meeting was really the first time this new group had met together at all. It was also the first time we'd gone through that kind of process, and generally, a polished, strategic, master strategic plan doesn't happen that fast, even though we would all hope that it did. So I would hope that, once you get it back and have a look at it, that maybe one of these first work sessions, off-site work sessions or here, that we, we would tackle it first as a discussion and work item rather than an action item.
That's fine.
That's my thought.
I think that's probably appropriate.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
You bet.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda, I believe. I have no one signed up for public comment. Is that correct, City Clerk? Fantastic. Well, now announcements time, so. City Manager, I guess the agenda for next week first?
See, for February 11th, we have several board appointments to the Topeka Landmark Commission, Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District, Human Relations Commission. Thank you. And the Downtown Business Improvement District. We have one presentation for Development and Growth Management 2019 Year-End Report Consent Agenda. We've got an expenditure ordinance, special events, and noise exceptions. Non-action include discussion, comprehensive housing study update. We have a discussion on the proposed 2021 to 2030 capital improvement plan, and then the third discussion is the 2021 budget priorities.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, deputy mayor. I have one announcement tonight. We're pleased to announce the finance department will begin hosting 2021 City of Topeka Budget Community Engagement Sessions this month. These sessions will allow our neighbors to, opportunity to voice their opinion on the budget. Finance Department will systematically collect, maintain, monitor, and analyze information gained from the community engagement sessions, and maintain contact information on individuals and groups that wish to be kept informed. We will utilize multiple communication mechanisms to ensure that our neighbors are invested in the process and made aware of opportunities for feedback. The information derived from the budget engagement sessions will be, will provide a critical perspective for making decisions in the 2021 budget. Our first session will be held tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM during the Citizens Advisory Council Meeting located at 620 Southeast Madison in the Holiday Conference Room. So beginning process, it's something new for the city, something that the finance department decided to bring forward. It's an opportunity for citizens to first of all, get some basic budget information as to how we form our budget, and then also to give them the opportunity to provide information to us as to what priorities they see for our budget.
And that is, again, tomorrow night at 6:00 at, is that correct?
Yes, tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Holiday Conference.
At Holiday Conference, okay. I want to get the room, that will probably be standing room only.
It's the regular CAC meeting.
Okay, okay. No, I appreciate, I mean, budget, I think whenever we hear budget, a lot of times, people's eyes glaze over, but that is, of course, a crucial thing that we do here in the city. So I appreciate the finance department and Mrs. Lamendola doing that, so. All right, yes, ma'am, yes, please, Councilwoman Hiller.
Is there a schedule for those, and are they going to be public meetings, or are you, they for the most part going out and joining people where they already are?
It'll be, end up being a combination of both. The schedule, I don't have the schedule with me, and I think they've started formulating and putting some items on there. and putting some items on their agenda, and there'll be multiple per week, so we'll get that schedule out to everyone.
Helpful for us to know.
Yeah.
We try and refer people we, we can, thank you.
The only announcement, had, had something come up today, and I don't know if all the council members get this or not, whenever a C Click Fix Ticket happens in your district, you get a little email alert. And it doesn't always, I, I think generally staff has like 48 hours to get back to people on those, and, and generally does a real good job, but today there was a spectacular example where, this morning someone called about a streetlight that had been out, and they had been calling West Star, and come to find out it was a city light, and they'd been calling West Star for a couple months. Finally, it became apparent today that West Star told them that it was a city light, and they reported about, this morning about 8:30 or so, and by 4:00 this afternoon, traffic operations went out, and the light is fixed. So shout out to traffic operations, it's, doesn't always work this fast, and we don't want to ever promise people that it will, but it's nice when it does, so, so nice work, everyone. Councilwoman Ortiz.
And there shall be light.
Absolutely. In District 4.
And, oh goodness. City Manager, it is 2020 now, and I, I just want to know, Councilman Padilla asked for funding for the three senior citizens, I don't know if we know if we have money to fund them for 2020, or where are we at on that? You can't report on it now.
I can.
You can, you can let me know later.
Right, at, towards the end of the year, when we'd met with financial staff, they made the decision that the funding would be available, and so Department of Neighborhood Relations sent contracts to those entities in order for them to fill out at basically the same timeframe that we would normally have, those agencies that are going to receive funding, and so they were given a little extra time to submit that back, and so the funding is there and being provided to those, will be provided to those organizations, similar to ways it's been provided in the past where they spend the funds, get a reimbursement with the grant, so. So the money, the $10,000 is dedicated to those four organizations, to each.
That's, that's great news. I'm sure Councilman Padilla will have something to say about that. I, I wanted to say something to Hannah. Hannah, if you don't have your smoke detector, see, see that gentleman down there? You can contact him. Or any of our firefighters, and you can get a free, I said free, smoke detector.
That's great to know.
So I need you to get on the list, they'll come out and put it up and everything for you, okay? And I will do a follow-up to see if you've done that, to keep you and those babies safe, okay? Thank you Deputy Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
I don't know if I can follow her, thank you Deputy Mayor. But yes, she beat me to the punch. We had our meeting this morning on social services, and I was looking at that, and I thought, well, I'll see you tonight and we'll maybe bring that up, but I thank you very much for working with the whole council and working with me and, and meeting that requirement. And I thank my colleagues on the council who supported me in asking for that consideration, so I'm sure that they'll be very appreciative of the funds and help them get through the, the needs that they have. So thank you again Deputy, I mean, I get in concern now. Again, City Manager, thank you.
Councilwoman Nagier.
Deputy City Manager, you're also doing a great job. I just want to remind everyone to be very safe on the roads, especially with the weather coming in after having such a beautiful Super Bowl Sunday with such a beautiful result. Be very careful out there and know that the city is already planning to respond to the weather conditions. Take extra time in the morning.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Great job, by the way. Peered for a minute, we were going from Robert's Rules to Tony's Rules. You brought it back, so that's good. City Manager, appreciate the discussion from Parks and Recreation tonight. I, I feel better about where we're at. Mr. Loren, obviously, brings some enthusiasm, and I appreciate that, so as was mentioned several times, a couple times a year, hearing that would be great. Thank you very much.
Councilman Duncan.
Well, everyone will be happy to know the Duncan household's fire detectors are up to speed, up to date. However, my six-year-old thinks he needs an axe in case he needs to get through a door. We haven't done that yet, but discussions are ongoing in our household.
I think that's a great idea.
Just a couple things. The first is, even though she's not here tonight, I want to thank the mayor for appointing me to the, I want to almost call it the Expo Center, because I did that for 30 years, with the Stormont Vale Events Center back onto that board. Before I became a city council member, I was on that board as a commission appointee, and it's going through renovations, as people know, spending $48 million of taxpayer dollars, and so I'm glad I can continue to serve as they finish those renovations, because one of our primary functions on that board is to make sure the money's being spent the way it was supposed to. So I'm glad I can, I can continue that and make sure that's happening. I want to thank the firefighters and the fire chief, District 8 particularly, who put up with me this week as I took a fire tour, and got to interrupt their day and ask a lot of questions and, and interrupt them for a little while, but it was very enlightening and got a lot of answers, and so I want to thank them for that. I also want to thank the Police Department. Councilwoman Nagier and I spent some, about half a day looking at the homeless encampments and going around the city and looking at where those areas are throughout the city. Again, very eye-opening. You think you know what you know until you realize you don't know the half of it, and so that's not just something we, we took in then, but we'll use it moving forward to help, help improve those problems. And then lastly, I just want to say, not just with snow tonight, but it looks like we're going to have a cold stretch for a little while, despite the fact that the groundhog saw its shadow, that still isn't for a little while longer, and I always like to remind people, there are cold people out there, even in their own homes, so watch for your neighbors and the people in your neighborhood to make sure that they don't need some help, and if they do, do what you can to help them out.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you for getting the committee set up and getting our council moving for, for our year, and you're doing a great job as Deputy Mayor running the meetings.
Well, there's still time for you to mess it up, so.
Tony's rules.
Tony's rules. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Yesterday, last night, we had the first of a series of meetings in our quadrant, and I forget what number our quadrant is, but suffice to say, we had it at Garfield Community Center with the TPD and a number of other organizations, Safe Streets, the Census, et cetera. And that went really well. It was initially mostly presentations as citizens get used to this first round, but my understanding is there will be three more in our quadrant before the end of the year, and hopefully there will be increased attendance at each one along with increased dialogue. So I just wanted to thank the chief for that. Also, I agree, a schedule on, you know, these budget meetings would be wonderful, so I could share with District 2. Also, stay safe everyone, and just wanted to let people know that I am part of the Social Service Grants Committee, and that $10,000 for the senior centers and community action is very appreciated. I do want the public to know, though, that we will be having dialogue sometime this summer about looking at the possibility of additional funding. Have no idea how that's going to go down. The bottom line is, is that it is going to be set on the agenda, and hopefully we'll continue to move forth in that. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last thing, it was alluded to during our prayer tonight, but what a magnificent outcome of the Super Bowl. So I guess officially on behalf of the City of Topeka, I would like to congratulate the Kansas City Chiefs. And there's, there's been a little talk about if it's a Missouri team or a Kansas team, but the Chiefs are our team, it doesn't matter if Kansas, Kansas or Missouri. But if the Chiefs, if, if they could do someone a favor for the City of Topeka, I would ask that next Super Bowl, they get up in the first quarter. I, I can't, I can't take it anymore, my blood pressure, so congratulations, and we do not need an executive session tonight, so we're hereby adjourned.